You mean to switch seats?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Kenai for January 22. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to jump in with roll call? Okay. Chairman Tweet, absent. Vice Chairman Fikes?
Here.
Here. Commissioner Springer?
Here.
Commissioner McIntyre? Absent. Commissioner Greenberg? Absent. Commissioner Halsted?
Here.
Commissioner Askin?
Here.
We have a quorum. And let's see, that brings us to number three, Oath of Office. Staff? Bob, can I have you stand up, please? And hold up your right hand. I, Robert Springer?
I, Robert Springer.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The laws and ordinances of the State of Alaska?
The laws and ordinances of the State of Alaska.
And the City of Kenai?
And the City of Kenai.
And that I will faithfully and honestly perform the duties?
And that I will faithfully and honestly perform the duties.
Of Planning and Zoning Commission Member?
Of Planning and Zoning Commission Member.
Of the City of Kenai, Alaska, to the best of my ability.
Of the City of Kenai, Alaska, to the best of my ability.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on to number four, Approval of Agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All righty, and can we get a approval of the, or a motion, excuse me, for consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All righty then, that's going to move us on to item number B, Approval of Minutes. Item number C, Scheduled Public Comment. Anyone in the audience? No. Unscheduled Public Comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to E, Consideration of Plats. Seeing none, we will move on to item number F, Public Hearings. And we have two. First one is a resolution, APZ 2020-01, recommending the Kenai City Council adopt an ordinance to amend Kenai Municipal Code. The ordinance is 3102-2020. And they want to amend the Kenai Municipal Code 14.20.280. Public hearings and notifications to reduce the newspaper posting requirement. We have a staff report?
Yep, thank you Vice Chair Fikes. So ordinance 3102, oops, sorry. Resolution, PZ 2020-01, would recommend to the Kenai City Council that they adopt ordinance 3102-2020. If you look in your packet on page 14, that has a memorandum from Councilmember Naxte and that details the changes that would occur if this ordinance were passed. So Kenai, the City Council in fall had passed, in October had passed, changes that would amend their advertising requirements. They had gone down where they weren't going to include in the newspaper posting the full agenda. For us, I still kept it where the full agenda would be included. But I wanted to match City Council in reducing the newspaper posting requirement from twice to once. And I should say, yeah, Councilmember Naxte. So this would provide a cost savings. There's a table below that shows how much the Planning and Zoning Department had spent on advertising. So this is typically in the Peninsula Clarion. You'll note that the cost did go down a bit already in FY19. That may reflect that we've sometimes asked for a reduction in the width of the column to try to save some money. And then it just varies depending on how much we have to post. So this would be in line with City policy to look for cost savings. And then it would still leave in place all of the other current notifications. So there would still be posting on public bulletin boards, the sign on a subject property, mailing postcards to neighboring property owners, and posting to the city's website. And I'll just mention one other change. If you look at the actual text of the ordinance, there is a little underline where it says it would change the requirement for the first posting from seven to six days. That was just to match the standard wording that City Council had used. It wouldn't actually end up changing the date that our agenda would be posted in the paper. It would, there's some clarification that talks about how days are counted is all it is. And so that just follows City Council where we have a standard way of counting days and then City Council and PZ Commission would match the number of days before. But it wouldn't actually change that our agenda is typically in the paper on Friday. But it would eliminate for public hearings where we have to do a separate posting just for the public hearings before the agenda is published. And public hearings, it's not everything that's on our agenda, so it's never for plats. It's usually for code changes or if someone has applied for a conditional use permit are the typical public hearings we have. We're currently, we're required to do the separate posting. And the last thing I'll say is, I think this would also be an improvement in cases where the City Council is referring something to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. Because in the past, sometimes there's been time to prepare the materials, but we couldn't meet the second posting requirement for the newspaper. So I think it would also just improve that process. That's my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you Planner Appleby. And can we go ahead and get a motion?
Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution PZ 2020-01.
Thank you Commissioner Springer. And can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Commissioner Askin. Go ahead and open it up for discussion. Anybody wishing to discuss?
I guess I've got a few questions. So what you've posted on these costs, is that last year's, the 2,543.98? That was for 2019?
Go ahead.
So the costs are given by fiscal year, so it doesn't, it doesn't match the calendar year. So our fiscal year starts in July. So this would be July 2018 through June of 2019.
Okay. So what we would be anticipating is, you were saying roughly half of that, so?
I'd say the cost savings would be half of what the average cost of advertising is. It's hard to say because we did try to just move the column size in to save costs so that may have reduced it from the average. Or it just depends on the number of items we typically have to post in a year. But I'd say the cost savings would be half of the average advertising that has occurred over the last three years.
I guess my second question would be, if we're going through due diligence and making sure that there's mailings out there and posting on public boards and putting on our website, is there even a need to do a newspaper? Would it be smart to cut that cost altogether based on like, there's not really a lot of newspapers that are being pushed out anymore? And I think we could say that we're doing our best by posting it on our website and mailing it out to the areas that are affected by it. Why not save that whole cost?
I'd say the rationale for keeping the newspaper is, was, this was introduced to match City Council and because we do still have a local newspaper that's in circulation. So I suppose at this point in time, I think the argument was the fear that it would cut down and like, we could miss notifying some people, I guess was the rationale for now. But I, I will say, I do think there is a pattern to moving towards digital communication, but I agree for now to keep at least the one posting of the agenda in the Clarion.
Do you take advantage of the Clarion's other, like they have an online, their webpage? We, you make sure that that gets in that section as well?
I guess you mean the community, or through the Vice Chair, the community events page or?
I think that's what it is, yeah.
I think it is on there. I can certainly double check. I know there's a few online community message boards. I'll bring up one other thing that if we ever would not publish in a printed newspaper, we would have to make sure that that also meets state requirements because the state has some minimum requirements. So I'm, it could be that posting in a newspaper is still a minimum notification requirement of the state. But I can make a note to follow up and just see if we're posted on the online digital calendars because I, I know people do use those to figure out what's going on in the community as well.
Yeah, just one last comment was, I would really, I would like to see that as a progression, whether we reduce it this year and revisit it again in the following year or based off a city code or state code. If we have to put it in the paper, I just, I know that that's a tremendous expense and I've tried advertising in the paper in the past and it is, it is expensive for what you're getting. And if there's free options out there, we could take advantage of those and still meet our requirements. That would be easy money. Kind of done.
Commissioner Springer?
Vice Chair, I have a question for staff. I wanted, just wanted to verify, has the legal department looked at this to verify that it was acceptable in doing that? I guess that's my question.
Through the Vice Chair, yes. Our City Attorney reviewed the ordinance before it went to City Council to make sure it was legal.
Okay. One other question. It says exceeding minimum requirements. I was just curious, what is the minimum requirements? Do you know that or?
Through the Chair, I do not. I, I, yeah, I know that this exceeds the minimum requirements, but I was thinking with the question on the newspaper, is that a minimum requirement? I would guess that it is, but I would need to look up the state ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered.
Any other questions? Go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Halsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Springer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fikes?
Yes.
Chairman Fikes? And Commissioner Askin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to public hearing F2, a resolution, PZ 2020-02, recommending the City, recommending the Kenai City Council adopt the City of Kenai Hazard Mitigation Plan. Excuse me, staff report?
Thank you Vice Chair Fikes. So this resolution would make the recommendation to City Council to adopt the hazard mitigation plan. The draft was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission at least twice, two versions, as it was being worked on. And Jennifer Lemay, the consultant who assisted the City in preparing the draft, also presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I made note of one big change that occurred from the draft is just the ranking of the hazards. So flood erosions was made number one because that aligns with a lot of what the City has done in the past and is currently doing. And then followed by wildland fire and then earthquakes. So included the entire draft plan in the packet. It has been approved by the state and by FEMA pending local adoption. So if the Planning and Zoning Commission passes this resolution, then the Kenai City Council would consider adopting the plan at their next meeting. And then this would be again sent to FEMA for final approval. And then, once we have that, then the plan would be good for five years. And then in five years, the City would be required to update it to keep it current. One advantage of having an updated hazard mitigation plan is it opens up some additional grants that we're eligible to apply for. So there's a big advantage to having an updated one. And one other last follow-up piece that would happen if this is adopted, our plan is an annex to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Hazard Mitigation Plan. So once FEMA gives final approval for ours, then I would notify the borough and then it would be before them to adopt as an annex to their plan at one of the borough meetings. End of staff report.
Thank you. Excuse me, can I go ahead and get a motion, please?
Vice Chair?
Commissioner Springer?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution PZ 2020-02.
I'll second.
All righty then. Any discussion? I have a question for staff. So you brought up that by the City going ahead with this mitigation plan, it allows the City or the City's residents to be informed or eligible for grants should a hazard or earthquake or natural disaster occur? Is that true?
Yes. So currently, without a, without a most, without an approved plan up to date, we're eligible to apply for money after a natural disaster occurs. So you could apply for money after an earthquake. But if you have this plan in place, then it gives you the ability to apply for money before something happens. So you could apply, say, for something that would prevent damage in an earthquake. I don't know, I'll just go with shelving that maybe wouldn't be likely to topple. It just, having this plan at least allows you to apply for this particular type of grant. I forget the, there's acronyms for them, but that's the basic difference is if you have the plan, you can apply for money before something happens as opposed to only after.
And a follow-up question. So we, here in the Kenai area, we suffered the first earthquake that resulted in some fires and explosions out north and then also, most recently, the November 3rd one. So through those experiences, have we made any changes to our plan? Or did that, were we still eligible for these grants? I guess is my question.
So the City, there's currently an open grant application period that is associated with the earthquake. You can also apply for money that didn't result from the earthquake. So there's a whole list of, it's this pool of money after something happens that you can apply for assorted types of hazard mitigation. So the City is eligible to apply for money after the earthquake, but this could make us eligible to apply for something that would prevent damage before an earthquake occurs, if that makes sense. Yeah.
That does. Thank you. Anybody else? Going once? Seeing no further discussions? Can we call the roll? Chair Fikes?
Yes.
Commissioner Springer?
Yes.
Commissioner Askin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Halsted?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to G, Unfinished Business. Seeing no unfinished business, that brings us to agenda item H, New Business, discussing the Alaska Planning and Zoning Conference. And the theme seems to be collaborating for resilient communities. Does staff have a comment?
Yes, so page 223 of the packet, I have a memorandum. So I just wrote to thank the Commission for the communication with City staff, mostly a thank you to Willie since she coordinated a lot of the logistics for this. So thank you for replying about your availability and interest in attending. And I just wrote a note that it's expected that you attend the conference days for which you are registered. And for this year, five of the Commissioners are attending at least part of the conference. So everyone is going to the Sunday Training Day, which is the Planning Commissioner Training Day. And then a few of the Commissioners are staying for some of the sessions that are on Monday and Tuesday. I'll be attending the Monday and Tuesday sessions. I would have also attended the Sunday one, but I'm on the board for the Alaska Planning Association and that day is our board retreat. So I actually won't, I may not see, I may not see you actually if you're only there for the Sunday Planning Commissioner. for the Sunday Planning Commissioner Training. But I'll, I'll still be there on Monday and Tuesday. Please communicate with staff if there's any last minute things that come up. Otherwise, it's, it's expected that you'll, you'll be there the days that you attend. The only other note I wanted to say about the conference is I, I had talked preliminarily with the city of Soldatna about getting together for some sort of regional meetup while everyone's in Anchorage, so just the Kenai Peninsula Borough. I don't know if that will happen just with the schedule, just if people are, might be only there for Sunday, it could be hard to coordinate. So I was thinking if there's any way we could still, like I could still be there for, for breakfast even though that's when the board retreat is. So I don't know if that will happen or not, because I think that is one thing I wished I would have done for the conference last year is try to get everyone together from the region for, for some sort of dinner or informal get-together. So if that does happen, then I'll, I'll let you know. But for now, I think it's just an idea that I think will be too hard to work out logistically. That's all I wanted to say about the planning conference and the draft at a glance agenda, that's still the most current one out there. But the website should have details on the sessions soon. I checked right before the meeting and this is still, all that's there so far.
I have a question for staff. So if we're going for just a Sunday, if we're there on Saturday, is Saturday a day of doing events or meeting up with folks?
If I, I suppose if I know that everyone would be there Saturday night, I, I was thinking for, if I, we could always meet up for City of Kenai if everyone is there Saturday night, but the, the conference doesn't start until Sunday, so. I don't know, it's something I could, I could check in the logistics and look into, but otherwise the, it's really Sunday when it starts.
I'm open. So I'll put me down if you guys want to do something. Alrighty then. Seeing no other discussion, we will move on to agenda item number I, pending items, seeing none. That brings us to reports. Item Agenda J, city council, Councilman Nexted.
Thank you. So you haven't had a meeting since November 13th. So I have three meetings to provide to you. And we would have more, but you know, they fill up near holidays also. So I'm going to skim through them is what I'm going to do. And they're all in your packet, so I appreciate that because a lot of times there's just the last agenda, action agenda that's in there. But there's three. So if you, if it starts on, it starts on page 229. And as I'm paging through, if there's something I skip or I don't talk enough about or you have questions on, go ahead and interrupt me at the time. Probably the best way to handle that. So the, the, the first meeting I'll cover is the December 4th meeting. It was kind of a long meeting. We, we had a number of folks here under scheduled public comments. Brandon Barnamann from the Watershed Forum was here. And he, he talked to us about the value of nonprofits in our community, highlighted the ways in which the Kenai Watershed Forum and the City of Kenai have successfully partnered with one another in the past. And basically kind of, we know him, of course, you know, but kind of reintroducing and reminding us of a lot of the things that we, we do together and that they, they do for the city. The, the second item was Jennifer Lemay from Lemay Engineering. And she presented what you approved to move on to us tonight, the, the draft hazard mitigation plan. She did a nice presentation on that, kind of explaining it and, and some of the changes Elizabeth was talking about were, were made, you know, from that meeting. One being the, having the bluff erosion project being the number one on there. But it was, it was pretty, a pretty complete document for, for a draft plan. The, the number three item that we had was a presentation from Joy Mariner of BDO Inc. And what they do is they, they do an audit on our finances here every year. We hire them, they come in, they, they go through it and this is not a brief thing, it's, it takes weeks. There's an annual financial report that comes out of it that Terry Eubank puts together and then some of it they do, looking for any discrepancies. And they really didn't find any, you know, once again, basically the city is, is doing everything it should be doing and, and how it should be doing it and everything like that. And Terry and the, and the finance staff should really be commended, you know, for all of their work. And we're kind of getting used to this because it seems like he does that every year, but we shouldn't take it for granted because, you know, it's, it's one of those real important things within the city. Moving on, under public hearings, number two. We, we decided, determined that a real property described as Alieska subdivision essentially is available for, for sale. And what that is, is where the main street tap and grill is. There's actually two lots there. It's airport property. It was one of the nine properties outside of the airport reserve that could be purchased that has a major development on it. And we enacted approving the, the sale of that property. So that'll be in private hands. Those monies will then go to the airport, one of the airport funds, you know. So then item three, we enacted unanimously revenues and appropriations for the terminal fund. And really what that was, we were replenishing the, the contingency monies that we had in there as contingencies, you know, monies had been consumed just to make sure that it was full one up. And, and basically the plan for the, the terminal is that it should be substantially complete around February 20th now, although it sounds like some of the sighting may not all be on there. We'll see how the weather goes and all of that. The sighting itself is interesting in that it's all numbered, every piece, you know, one goes to two and all of that, and we're talking about all the way around. And then they fit in there and it's not just a nice rectangular building. So it'll be interesting to see how the jigsaw puzzle kind of goes together. You know, when they get to the end, they might be missing a piece. I don't know. So it might be even a little later, later than that. But one of the other things that I think is going to probably be added on to that may extend it a little bit is probably a new boiler. The boiler was not planned to be replaced in that building, although it, the engineer said, well, it's got about another five years. Well, you know, by some number. So it, it seems to me when you're going to spend $12 million on a, and touch everything in a building, that's probably a good idea to go ahead and replace that. So I think that's, that's going to happen on that. So then we'll have a new electrical system, mechanical system, including the boiler and everything else. So the project will probably continue on for a while, but hopefully you won't be able to notice much of that. Then another thing we, number four, we adopted unanimously a resolution appealing a policy for supervisory subcommittee. And what we did actually, we didn't abolish it, we just amended it. We have a, we have, the council has three, three employees, the city clerk, the city attorney and the city manager. And we, we meet with them annually and go over their performance and what they expect to do and do all those kinds of things that you do with an employee. This policy was to, to meet at least quarterly with them and do a lot of that same stuff. It really wasn't quite happening. My, I was going to just appeal that if we need to meet with them, let's meet with them. And, and it was changed basically to if we need to meet with them, we'll meet with them. And the good thing about that would be is if you, if the whole council were to meet with them, it would have to be advertised because it would, there'd be a quorum and a meeting. This group here is actually a group of three. It's the mayor, the vice mayor and a designee. And so it's not truly a meeting, so it can happen kind of quickly. But it's probably something that we'll just kind of sit there now. But that's what that's all about. Item five, we adopted unanimously identifying projects to be funded through the State of Alaska Grant number for personal use fish-related improvements. We have some money left over from the South Beach and some of all that work. It has to be kind of related to that somewhere. It's been transferred so it can be spent on the North Beach for things up here as well. And there were a, a list of things that the administration had looked at and what we approved to do were some concrete toilets, basically. I think on both. Elizabeth, there was another thing that was approved.
It was the dip net shacks, the toilets. Forgetting the third now.
It's important, but it's not as important as the toilets.
Yeah.
But anyway, if it, you know, but there's, then there was an RV park, you know, that they wanted to do on, on, is it, is it Spruce? You know, and, and the council debated, discussed that for the longest time. That probably may not be the highest and best use for that particular piece of property. It's right next to the Leash, Leash Shore Center, I think, there. Essentially looking, overlooking the bluff and it would require perhaps purchasing another piece of property. So that, that didn't get any traction on that one. And if we think of what the other project was, I'll let you know, but it, it could have, it could have had to do with, you know, check people through little shacks or something like that maybe, but.
Wasn't that your tractor? Did you get a tractor?
I think we have one. Yeah, we have one for, for picking up carcasses and raking them down the beach and. Do we need a new one? Okay, it wasn't on the list and it came from, you know, administration.
I thought that was your, your third one.
No. Okay. Going on down in the, the work here that we did, then under new business, item five, we discussed old town, Kenai signage. That might be something that would come to you eventually perhaps. It, it occurred to me from a, from another meeting with the historical society, there's no, there's no sign on the spur highway that says old town this way, like you would go into any city, small town, whatever, to know where the historical area is. And so, you know, council kind of gave the nod and administration thought that was a great idea to, boy, we really ought to have a sign that directs you down there. And once people start going in there and getting lost, whatever they do, basically having other little signs that are kind of work together, basically directing you to all of the things that we have down there, you know, and, and including, you know, phone apps and all that. So basically you can, you know, with your phone, go like this and that's, this is pretty mountain across the inlet. Well, that's Route Mount Readout, it's 10,031 feet, whatever, all that stuff, it's all on there. Just all that cool stuff that we probably ought to have. So anyway, we'll see, it's going to come in phases, but that'll be, that'll be moving ahead, I think. Then we discussed an ordinance that the borough is working on, basically, this is going to come up in another meeting coming up here, adopting private streets and gated subdivisions. We, in another meeting, I'll just talk about it now and if I bring it up again, the, the borough planning department is trying to find a way to put into its code, a way to create private subdivision roads within right of ways. If somebody wants to subdivide a piece of property, they can make it a private road if they go through these steps. Well, that would include all the cities as well. We felt that that was something that this, a city decision, not a borough decision, perhaps a little bit of overstepping there. And, you know, we have mechanisms for doing that on our own. And so at our last meeting, we, we sent a, a resolution requesting that they, they not continue with that. But, and then we had a, finally on that meeting, a discussion about a potential parcel purchase by Ron Hyde. And he, he owns the landing across the river there. And, but any rate, what, and, and some other property we've sold to him, but what he wants to do and has been working on is that heavy lift blimp. And I think that's still, that's still a go. And what he's wanting to do is get a piece of property kind of in that area right there for a hanger for this thing. So when it needs to come in for maintenance, it won't be here very much according to him, you know, it'll be out making money, but it needs to come in for, for work occasionally. So that's what he's looking for. So we haven't really done anything with it. I just want to let you know that that was still, still on the horizon and, and hopefully happening. Okay. Just skimming over, it's taking a lot of time, isn't it? December 18th was our next meeting. And on public hearings, we had number one, we enacted an ordinance, basically it, it, it has to do with the pay for, for new and existing police officers. The, we're having a, a problem retaining police officers here in the City of Kenai. It's really difficult to be competitive with the State of Alaska. We get them trained, go through the process and they might actually go outside for a job after they're trained. And what, what this, this ordinance does is something that Terry Eubank and the city manager and maybe others have worked on, but it, it provides some bonuses and step-ups, you know. It's actually quite a complicated ordinance, but it steps up as you advance. So you have places to advance as you move forward as a police officer. So we're hoping to be able to retain them longer. And we'll see how, how that works out. Then item six, we, we had a resolution to support the Alaska Municipal League Resolution 222020, requesting the State of Alaska Legislature approve a coastal infrastructure general obligation bond for the 2020 election. And the bonding for the infrastructure for the coastal is we, I think there's like, if I have the number right, about 91 ports and harbors in the State of Alaska, kind of in that range. And the, you know, the Civil Engineers, ASCE, has given basically a grade of like a D overall to these facilities because of disrepair and, and whatnot. And so what it recognizes is that a lot of these, these structures need to be repaired, upgraded and whatnot. And the, the bonding would, would go a long ways to repairing those. Obviously, the most, the obvious, most obvious one is the Port of Anchorage, here on the press, monthly or weekly or something about that. Then number eight, requesting the city, the Peninsula Borough Select a municipal entitlement land. And, and then it gives a, a long description there. What that is, is on the end of Fourth Avenue off of Birch, there's a little park there kind of near the airport. The city's maintained and had for decades. And it was part of the subdivision, but the subdivision folks didn't pay for it, pay the taxes. I think it went back to BLM, DNR and something like that. So they own it, we maintain it. But we can't, we can't negotiate with them, but the borough can make a selection of the property, which they've done. They'll get it and then we'll get it back from the borough and then it'll just continue. So that's, process is, is happening now. And I think the borough just had that on their agenda here this, this last week as a matter of fact. Then we adopted unanimously requesting DOT keep the Silver Tip Station open. That's the one up by Hope. It was a request. We did get a nice letter that said, well, you know, budgets are tight and sorry, basically. And, and we do a really good job with what we've got. And then there's two characters here, Bob Springer and Diane Fikes. They were confirmed for the mayor's nomination for, for planning and zoning. So congratulations. Glad to have you guys back here, actually. And then there were some appointments for the Airport Commission and others. Let's see. So that gets us down to the January 15th meeting. And quickly, at the very beginning, there was a proclamation as a Purple Heart City, the, some veterans, we had three veterans here, Purple Heart of that group were here. And we, the mayor gave a proclamation for the Purple Heart and Purple Heart, there's a kind of, there's going to be a sign and I think there's going to be like four of them probably around town that go up the Purple Heart City. Very nice, it's kind of recognizing the, the, the men and women that have, you know, been wounded and, and action and whatnot. And so it was a, a very nice presentation. Then under, under public hearings, moving on here, we adopted unanimously a recommendation that the borough not enact. um, basically the ordinance to, uh, to, uh, um, for, for private roads and streets with, that would include the cities. Um, then under new business, um, we, we sent what you discussed tonight about the advertisement to you. Uh, we adopted unanimously, uh, a lease assignment uh, from the Kenai Fabric Center to SOAR Ministries, the Kenai Fabric Center. Um, I think our packet said they've had a, a lease there since like ninety-four, but I'm pretty sure they were there in the seventies. Um, like, I think when I first started nosing, maybe seventy-seven, we're seventy-six, but I, anyway, I think they've been in Kenai since about seventy-two or four, somewhere in that range, but, uh, always been there. And, uh, so it may continue, um, as a fabric store for a while. I'm not sure exactly, but what SOAR's plans are with that. But, uh, that has been, uh, transferred over. Um, and then we had a discussion item, um, that I think the borough took up in their last meeting, as a matter of fact, as well. Um, with presentation a little bit by, uh, Scott Bloom on, uh, uh, remote seller sales tax implementation. And, uh, um, and that is pretty much been pulled together by Alaska Municipal League and a bunch of other cities and engine, uh, and attorneys within the cities that pu- pulled that all together. And it looks like, uh, um, that's gonna be becoming live here in the next month or so. And, uh, Scott Bloom is on the, on the board that is helping to put that together. So I, I think that there's a potential for a substantial amount of additional income for the, for the city through sales tax from those remote sales from all that. And with that, that, that's the regular council meeting and I, and I, but we did have a presentation in there somewhere. I think I missed it, uh, which include, included Project Homeless Connect. I printed this out and I'll, I'll pass it down. And, uh, this is coming up on, uh, January twenty-ninth, uh, from, from nine to, nine to three. Everybody's welcome to come. It's gonna be over at the Sports Center in, in Soldatna. And, uh, um, I, I'm sure that they're looking for some donations and some help and all of that. And any one of us are welcome to come in, but they'll, they'll help with, uh, childcare, uh, lunch, vet- uh, vet- veterinarian services, employment services, pet services, haircuts, you know, clothing, um, all of those things. And in, in the presentation, you know, it's not, um, the, the homeless do include, um, youngsters, teenagers that are, um, quasi-homeless, maybe living in a car and somebody's couch. And, uh, there's all kinds of statistics for that, but I think there's a lot more of that than you would have, than, than you would expect that there should be. And there shouldn't be any, but there's, there's quite a, that's how that is. And the last thing I wanted to, uh, mention, uh, doesn't have to do with any of that. I, I attended today, uh, a FEMA, in this, in this room. Uh, FEMA was here. There was about a dozen folks from FEMA, from FEMA National, State of Alaska, Region Ten, whatever, uh, and, and, and others with the city. Um, and what they're doing is they're doing a site assessment of the city airport. And what they wanna do is, uh, um, look at all the assets, uh, on, on the airport, which, I think, in addition to what the city owns, you know, like the Civil Air Patrol and some of the other, uh, folks, wherever fuel is and all of that. Um, they're looking at like a nineteen sixty-four earthquake and the area basically being broken up into pieces, you know, geographically and on the air, uh, in the, in the, on the peninsula here. And what, and, and basically what staging areas we have here, what capabilities we have, so they could use Kenai as an operational base uh, for that, where they're gonna put all the stuff, you know, and, and people and things and, and, and on it goes. So, um, that's, that's actually a three-day thing. Today was just the beginning of it. And I have tomorrow and, uh, and Friday, too. We'll put that together, so. Just kind of another good plan to have. So I thought I'd bring that to your attention. So, that was my brief overview of three meetings. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
(laughing).
Um, question regarding that remote seller sales tax.
Yeah.
Implementation. So is the city already getting remote sales tax?
Yes. We're getting remote sales tax currently, um, only from Amazon that I'm aware of. And that's something Amazon, uh, kind of did on its own. And, uh, so they're, you know, when I say we're getting it, they send it to the borough. And then the borough decides how to divvy it up based on, 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 um, your, 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 uh, your zip code or whatever. And, uh, hopefully, you know, that gets taken care of fairly accurate. They're sort of working on that because obviously, uh, nine-nine-six-one-one can actually be outside of the city of Kenai. Um, I'm like five-oh-two or something like that, add addition and all those other things. So with, with those additional codes, um, the borough knows where it goes. They just need to have that information, so.
Reason why I'm asking is 'cause I recently purchased an item online, uh, well, I don't believe it was from Amazon. I don't remember where now. Uh, the item was fairly expensive. It was over the five-hundred-dollar limit, in which case I got charged six percent tax, sales tax on an item. I was, I'm gonna say it was seven hundred bucks. So they didn't take the five-hundred-dollar cutoff, and I was just curious whether the city was even going to get that sales tax or, or not, you know?
Well, I, I've made purchases like that, too, you know, where there's been a percentage, and I don't know where that money goes. I frankly think that they, they pocket it.
Well, that's fine.
You know, in, in some of the cases, um, they're, yeah.
Okay, well, I know, I thought I'd ask you.
So, but anyway, uh, hopefully if, if they, uh, if they do it within a, a certain amount of, uh, dollar, uh, uh, sales um, in the state of Alaska, they'll be subject to this, and they'll have, they'll have to collect it. Fell off the radar there.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Naxted, any other questions? No other questions. That brings.
Kenai Peninsula Borough. That would be me. Eight-eight-three-nine. The Kenai Borough met on January sixth, and we had several plats before us that we reviewed, and all of them were subsequently approved. And then we moved on to public hearings. And there was a public hearing for a vacation of a portion of Beaver Way in the Moose Pass area. And that particular hearing was one that consumed the most, uh, discussion of the evening. And just in a nutshell, what that looked like is there was a area in the Moose Pass area that had a, um, homestead properties along with a frontage or easement that was being utilized as a airstrip. And all parties involved in the discussion and the conflict were in agreement until they weren't. And so then it was brought to the borough's attention, and then there was discussion from Department of Natural Resources, Department of Transportation, FAA, and then, of course, the two parties along this one strip. It was the, um, Turn Lake Inn gentleman felt that there was a safety issue, and so he was trying to bring it to some legislative body here on the peninsula to get some kind of remedy. He wasn't necessarily saying, "I don't want the runway. I just want somebody to be aware of my safety concerns and how best can we move forward." And stating that in a short twelve-month span, he'd already witnessed three accidents in this area. And so he was bringing it to the attention of the borough and also bringing it to the attention of the FAA. But again, at the end of the day, nobody had any teeth or any regis- regulations to go on. And so what we did in the hearing is we decided to, not having any guidance or code to follow, we, um, we did not approve it. And so what we, what the borough ended up doing is just asking the, um, property owners if they could go ahead and resolve it themselves. And then by the borough saying no to the resolution and denying it, the applicant has, uh, a year, twelve-month period to bring it back again. And so that's what our discussion was, is to try and see if the two parties couldn't resolve it on their own, at which time we could have more input from the FAA and the other agencies in that span to see if there was any change or improvement. And then after that, we moved on to... It's been so long. I, I did not have any notes, so let's see. Did the easement. So we had an ordinance to amend the Kenai Peninsula Borough mitigation plan. We had some talk and presentation on that. And we did a conditional land use permit application for a material extraction on a parcel in the Kiski area. That one was approved. There was no di- issue. The Nekiski location was fifty-three-six-ten and fifty-two-six-ninety-six Strawberry Avenue. It was pretty much on the map. It showed, uh, was a very remote area with very, um, very few properties, if you will. I think there was like three properties that were actually gonna be near this location. And then the next one we looked at was a vacation, uh, portion of Markoka Avenue, a sixty-foot wide rightaway running east to west for approximately six-hundred-and-sixty feet adjoining the south boundary. And that, uh, rightaway was approved. And then we did another one for a fifty-foot wide pedestrian maintenance easement adjoining the high water mark of the Kenai River within the southeasterly portion of Lot One A, Block Six, in the Kenai River Keys subdivision. And there was some discussion on this one because as, um, Councilman Naxted brought up, Kenai Keys is a, um, gated community. And so there was concern on this, um, vacation in the gated area, if there would still be public access and whatnot. And there would. It would not, uh, cut anyone off as far as accessing this area, so that one was granted. Uh, the other one was a location and request for a vacation approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of Beaver Way, a sixty-foot rightaway, fronting Lot Blo- Lock Seven, Lot, Lot Seven, Block One. And that was in the Turn Lakes Estate. And that one was the one that we denied. And that was the end of our meeting. And then we had a little bit of discussion on the upcoming Borough, uh, Commission, uh, Planning Conference, and then we adjourned. Any questions? No questions. All ready then. Moving right along, that brings us to Agenda Item K, Additional Public Comments. Anyone?
Wait, I got to speak.
I'm sorry. I, I missed an agenda item. J three, I apologize. City Administration, my bad.
All good. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Fikes. Um, I was just going to add, um, I was just scribbling some notes, uh, uh, of some other things that were, were reported. Uh, so the Kenai Peninsula Borough Hazard Mitigation Plan, um, as Vice Chair Fikes mentioned, um, that was before, uh, I think it made it to the assembly, but I, I know it was close to being finalized. And also the city of Homer and city of Seward, um, their plans are also, um, close to being done. Uh, and so that was done on purpose to try to get everyone as close as possible to that five-year schedule. Um, so just, uh, and the Ke- Kenai Peninsula Borough Plan, that's the one where our, uh, local plan would be an annex of. And so same with, uh, city of Seward, Homer, city of Soldatna, et cetera. Uh, and then I also just made a note for the SOAR Kenai Lease Assignment, um, so I can just give a little bit more information on that. I do expect eventually, uh, so I, they have some plans to, uh, put some aviation-related development on the parcel. However, what was approved by city council was only the assignment, so it was just a name change only. Um, so they can't, uh, the, the use in the lease is a little vague, so it's an older lease, but, uh, but anyway, SOAR can't change the use until they come back again before city council. And, uh, I didn't know the exact timing of the Kenai Fabric Center, but, um, they could potentially become a sublettee to SOAR, or, um, since the use doesn't change, it, they could work out some sort of agreement. But, um, anyway, so I do expect eventually SOAR will put aviation development there, but I don't know their timing on that. And, and city council would have to approve it before it, it occurred. Uh, let's see. I attended in January, uh, CAPED, the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District. They have, uh, an economic forum for the Kenai Peninsula every year. Uh, this year it was in Seward. Um, last year it was in Homer. And in twenty-twenty-one, it's, it's going to be in Kenai. Um, but I was able to attend in Seward this year. Uh, and, uh, I, I think I got a lot out of it. I, I wrote, uh, my favorite part was the, um, state representative, uh, commented on tourism. And I thought just from the, the state perspective of marketing, uh, since a lot of the state marketing dollars tend to go to the cruise ship industry. And then, uh, at the city level of marketing, we had a, a marketing, uh, firm that the city had hired came and gave a presentation at city council. And, uh, I really enjoyed it. They, they talked about on a city level, uh, the way we should talk about the city and, 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 uh, and market it is not just for visitors, but also, um, just talking about how it's a, a good place to live and, um, that we want to attract residents and, and people who wanna, uh, have a family and start businesses here and not, um, in addition to the, the people that we'd like to have visit our community. And, um, I'm excited to see, uh, what will result from the marketing team. I, I participated in a photo shoot, uh, so I'm, I'm personally excited for the results of that. I was on the beach with my bike, which was fun, uh, 'cause I got to go out during the day for that. But, uh, anyway, the, I thought the marketing team did a good job and had some good things to say about Kenai to highlight. Um, I, I, just why it's a good place overall. Um, let's see. Three, the, the census. Um, so you may have seen in the news, they were, uh, there's been reports how the, the first person counted in the twenty-twenty census um, was in, uh, Tuksek Bay. Uh, so the, the census happens every ten years, um, so twenty-twenty, it's, uh, it's a year of the census. Uh, in, uh, remote Alaska, they, there's a special, I don't know if I would call it exemption or policy, but, um, they're able to start their census counting earlier than other places. And, and that was done because the ground is more frozen in January, and so it, it eases travel to be able to reach people. Um, so that's why you're seeing the, the counting starting in Alaska in the news. Uh, it won't begin here until March, uh, if I have that right. Um, but anyway, there, there will be, uh, areas, public areas where you can go take the census. It's online. You could do it at home. Um, so there will be some materials in Kenai about the census, but it, it doesn't start in January for us. Let's see, with that. Oh, one other thing I, I saw in the news today, actually. I, uh, um, so I saw a story on KSRM. Uh, they had, they had said that there is more money needed for the Beaver Loop Road Bike Path, and that was incorrect. I, I let them know and I saw they took the story down, but just in case anyone, I don't know if it actually got read on the radio or not. Um, but I, I just saw it on their online website, uh, early this morning, and it was gone by when I checked again at midday. But, um, the, the Beaver Loop Road Project, uh, the Bike Path, I expect that one to be done next year. Uh, I don't believe the city contributed money, or it wasn't the same grant application. It was part of the, the road resurfacing, and the city still is going to take over maintenance of that Bike Path, but there's no, uh, there's no dollar amount change or anything that has changed with that project. The, the reference that they're, uh, making was, uh, should have been to the Bridge Access Road Project. Um, the city manager reported to city council that the, um, the funding we had applied for to get a Bike Path between Beaver Loop Road and the Kenai Square Highway along Bridge Access Road, that that amount had, uh, increased from the city's estimate. Uh, and that also happened to Soldatna. That's just the state bumped it up and, um, he was, uh, I, I know the city manager has been speaking with the state to try to move that project along, but that was his report, was that the, the city's estimate um, was bumped up by the state. Oh, and then I, uh, I also wrote, uh, a note that I, uh, going back to our, the first, uh, resolution of the night. I'll, I'll look and see if. night, I'll, I'll look and see if stating what the minimum requirements are at the state level would be appropriate for City Council or not to add to their packet. Because I, I know that, I'm confident that the, the change that we're recommending exceeds the state requirements, but I, I didn't feel I had enough knowledge without looking something up to speak exactly how we exceed the state requirements. So I can look that up and just let the Planning Commission know and see if it's appropriate to, to be prepared for any questions the City Council members may have. And I thought that would underscore too, that, that even if the, the comments that the commissioners make on things that are referenced to City Council, even if they're not, it doesn't change the, the actual resolution, the discussion, I think, still, is still sometimes inform City Council. So I think it's important that some of the questions the Planning Commissioners ask, they can help inform City Council of things that they should be thinking about or things that members of the public may be thinking about. Then I think the last thing I'll say for now is I did make a few changes to the website. I would like to do more, but, but if you look, there, there is some more detailed instructions now if you want to look up your zoning, or it just has a little, there's some questions, basic questions that I thought people might ask on zoning. And there is also a digital way to submit a code complaint. So if you see a violation of the zoning code, we now have an online form you could fill out, which I am, we haven't had very many because the snow covers up the type of complaints that we receive, which is typically garbage and abandoned vehicles and such. But anyway, I'm excited for that because it, it prompts someone to, to give us a location. They can leave a callback number, they can attach a photo. I, I think it'll end up being really helpful because usually the complaints we get are on the phone, or someone will just be in City Hall and say approximate, an approximate location. And I, I think this will just help us in, in tracking and give us some more information to start off with. So just heads up that, that is on the website. And I will say thank you for your patience in the, the meeting cancellations we had just following around the holidays. And then we had received fewer applications. But I, I know we already have an agenda item for the next meeting, so I, I know we'll be meeting in, on February twelfth next. But I hope everyone had enjoyed their holidays and, and is ready for the new year.
Thank you, Planner Appleby. I'll be sure to send out a notice to Jeff. And now that will bring us to Agenda Item K, Additional Public Comments. No additional public comments. And Commissioner comments. Commissioner Askin?
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Commissioner Halsted?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Springer?
I have none too.
All righty then. Councilman Nexted?
I just wanted to say, following up on something Elizabeth said, since you guys, is that marketing team that was here for, for the, that the city hired, I, I think we're really getting our money bang for the buck there. I felt like I was a board member like from GM or something like that, and I, that kind of professional type of presentation that they were providing, you know, I think we all felt really special in the way they presented it and everything like that, and the thought process. So I really look forward to, like Elizabeth, I'm really pretty stoked about, about, about these guys and what they're providing for us. So we'll, we'll see what happens.
And informational items, I think we covered that, planning and zoning resolution. So it brings us to our next meeting. Anybody planning on being absent? Good answer. Seeing no other items on the agenda, we are adjourned.